[S01]I'm gonna put a sign up in the front of your house that says, "We don't know if somebody lives there."
[S02]If you can find it. Yeah, I was gonna say.
No, I know where it is. I just don't know where to get... I don't know where the door is necessarily, but I know the house is.
I'd like to fly under the radar.
It's like Harry Potter.
I tried to deliver...
Yeah, exactly. We're at track, what is it, eight and a half or eight and a half?
I tried to deliver...
All right, so I have to read this little thingy here. So, "Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. You have been warned." It doesn't actually say that, but it seemed like a good thing to say.
I can add it.
Yep, okay. Um, so, welcome. Thank you all for coming. Um, and I think the members of the Select Board wanted to talk to us about their updated budget.
Yes.
So, you're on.
Well, we have included, we have, um, put full-time wages and increased that. We've added a minutes clerk, which is thirty-four hundred dollars.
Okay.
And, I think, is...
Tuition?
Yeah, dues, tuition is also...
Excuse me. That's under the expenses?
Been requested an increase, yeah.
Okay.
I'm looking for legal.
Legal's a separate, yeah. It's a separate budget.
Okay. Then those are the things that are the increase in the budget.
All right.
We put Mary under full-time wages.
Okay.
So, it's taken from part-time, so you can see the...
I was gonna say, so that's the switch. Is it, how many hours is it currently?
What, how, how many hours is it currently? Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, going to forty?
Yes.
Okay.
And the minutes clerk, I think, would be very advantageous as far as just taking minutes and transcribing them and getting them back to us, you know, within the next week or so.
Okay.
It's a very nominal number, so is, what does that translate into? Is that just like one hour at the meeting or an hour to...
One times two, couple, two times a month.
Yeah, a couple of hours, I think it was, at the meeting.
Okay.
So, what happens the other, I mean, because meetings are every week, right? So, is it, is it mostly like transcribing or is it actually taking minutes?
It would be taking the minutes at the meeting, then transcribing the minutes and getting them back to us. So, it'd be a few hours probably at home and a couple of hours at the meeting.
Okay. Is three thousand four hundred enough to cover that?
That's what, I mean, it just seems so low to me. And it also seems like if it's that low, it's not covering, it can't possibly be every week of, it can't be all meetings, is it?
Well, it's for four hours a week. So, it'd be about two, probably around two at the meetings.
Where's the back of the packet, things, and they all fit, spells out all the math.
Okay.
At grade four, at sixteen thirty-nine an hour, times four hours a week, times the fifty-two weeks.
Oh, okay.
Which is three thousand four hundred and ten dollars a year.
Yeah, she did some math there.
Okay, so it is, so that's all meetings?
Someone's on way, or on meetings, because there's holidays, they take holiday breaks, they also have summer break breaks, but they don't, maybe, some weeks might be heavier.
Sure, right. Okay. And we will, we'll take a look.
But it's half the hourly wage of the administrative secretary.
Okay.
So, it's probably a primitive thing to do.
Okay. All right, we will have a look.
And then what, I'm sorry, so then the tuition is what again?
The tuition is for a, is it called a class, Mary?
It's Mass Municipal Association, in concert with Suffolk University. For many years now, it's had a program where you'd be able to pick up twelve credits at the master's degree level towards a master's of public administration through Suffolk University for town administration. It's municipal administration.
Okay.
It's not strictly skewing towards people who want to become town administrators, but that is something that I'm interested in. And they take from all different municipal management disciplines, and they, they just elevate people on finances and governance and...
Okay. Just look, see if there's anything else that's changed. It looks like not.
I think so.
Okay.
The other thing that was in there was, I think, setting up the town administrator. They're gonna need a desk, but that should be somewhere, I don't think that's a change from last time, but just an explanation of...
Ah, so there are multiple patches.
Where is that person envisioned being?
There are a couple places they would be. There's where the veterans' agent is now, in the...
Inside the select office?
Yeah. Other places talked about, talked about is June's office and...
Yeah, oh, that's right, because we, and then where would June go? Into your, into the closet?
You're getting her...
Yeah.
She needs to be out of the, like, traffic.
Right, and then we talked, we talked about that last time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The town administrator is actually a separate budget entirely.
Sure, right. Yeah, we have that.
I was just wondering about the location.
Okay. All right. Anything else from your side? We have one from ours, which I know I sent you email about today. Which is that we need to pay the overage on snow and salt. Unlike, you know, that's the one line item, as you know, for having been on finance, that the state allows you to overspend on as much as you want, and a lot of towns and cities put one dollar in that and then spend like, I know, which is bananas. We try to put in a number that is...
That's legit.
Yeah, that is as close as we can predict it to be. Right now, we are, as of today, we're nineteen thousand over our estimate for the year.
Okay.
And so, we'll need to pay the snow and salt overage. I don't know the rules around special town meeting, annual town meeting, but I do know that in the past, when we have paid that, the procedure that we have used is to call a special town meeting for fifteen minutes before the annual town meeting solely for the purpose of that one article to pay snow and salt.
Right.
And we do have money to do that right now. I went through, I think, we've, we're gonna be talking tonight, but I've been through personally all of the warrant articles and the funding sources for the warrant articles, and we do have the money in free cash to be able to pay that with no problem.
Okay, good.
It may go up more, if we get more snow between now and May, let's hope we don't, then it'll go up some more.
Well, I'm under the impression that we do, we most likely would have a special town meeting.
Yeah.
I think we were just discussing on the way in about how that would, the notification for the special town meeting.
Whether it must be by a separate warrant or whether it could be tucked in the very beginning of the annual town meeting warrant.
Yeah, check with Barry, because we've done it multiple times before.
I know.
Okay, yeah, so, I mean, you know, we didn't do it...
We'll probably do some checking with Barry, checking with our town council.
Yeah, Eloise probably knows too, because she knows the rules pretty well. We didn't do it one year, and then we had to go through all kinds of hullabaloo to get the sand and salt finally paid.
Right, we did have, we do have a couple of outstanding bills, too.
They're on this...
We put them on this warrant.
Annual town meeting warrant.
And that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. They just have to have like a seventy-five percent approval or something in that range to, from, to pay for prior fiscal year's bills. And I lectured, I lectured Paul Spikowski about that, so this is my unhappy face, though he's not here to spank, so, well.
There's no point in getting happy, so...
I know, no, 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 I'm well aware, I'm well aware.
Can we pay for snow and salt out of reserve fund, or is that not...
I don't think we want to.
We don't?
Yeah, because it would take a big chunk, and we, we raised it to ninety, you know, based on prior year's experience of what comes in at the end of the year.
Right.
Legal and...
Right, and legal's higher than expected this year. So, yeah, if you can let us know...
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
But you know...
Okay, and if you need language from us, you know, for paying stones, I'll just let me know, and I'll, I'll yank something from the past or write it up. It's pretty straightforward. It's just, and again, Eloise or someone I'm sure knows why it's that way. Scott, you know, was the one that handled it in years past, and we were always like, yeah, we do that, that sounds good. But he never explained why, so now we're like, huh.
We're just good old soldiers and followed right away.
Exactly, we're like, you know.
Good job.
So, anyway, so we're now following past practice and the assumption that the rules are still the same, same way they were three and four years ago.
Checking Eloise on the way out, she's here tonight.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, she'll know. So, anyway.
All right.
That's the only thing, and hopefully we will get through all the warrant articles tonight. There's one where, shockingly, we don't have enough money to pay for them all, I know.
I was just gonna say, do we need to give them the warning about, about paying for everything and budget requests and all that?
Well, there's, we don't have, we don't, we don't have all the budget stuff in against income yet. I'll have that probably by this weekend, but, yeah, we didn't have enough money to pay for everything that people wanted, which is not unusual. And I spoke to the fire department and the police chief and the...
Person, some group that has to, has to record all of, you know, has to, has to know all of those people that want it electronically to then not print that many copies of the annual board and to actually realize the savings of not printing out as many, and how does that...
Here's, here's a, here's a thought. There is a section, well, there was a section on the Old Town website, I haven't checked to make sure, but I would be very surprised if there weren't still a section on the New Town website where electronic copies of the last two, one or two town reports was up there, and it's labeled "town reports."
Okay.
And you could just put at the head of that, "Would you like to receive your town report electronically instead of a printed version? If so, enter your email address here."
Mm-hmm.
The other option, I think...
But then who's the administrator for the, for the website?
Uh, currently, Chief Galvin, I think.
I was just gonna say.
And the IT committee.
It's the IT committee.
But, you know, Barry coordinates the mailing of the town report.
Right.
So, we'd have to figure out, I mean, I would suggest, like I said, including it as a question in the town census, because everybody gets that every year, and that gives them, gives everybody an option on a piece of paper that everybody gets all the time. You know, we could also make it an option at, at town meeting if people want to sign up for it.
Because wasn't part of this, part of this driven by timing of things, though, too? It wasn't just the cost of sending out all these annual reports, wasn't it also about breaking up, something about the, the timing of sending it out and not, like, we wouldn't be under as much pressure to get the, like, the budget would still have to be done by a certain time, but, but the reports from last year's committees could be sent out in like January or something, or maybe, so what would, is, that's not really being addressed here, right? I mean, because that's...
I don't know. I can ask Lisa or David. Here's my suggestion about this. Why don't I, David's uptown, but Lisa's here.
Right.
Why don't I ask Lisa for clarification on that point? Let me get my pen. Here it is. If this is cool with you guys, I'll ask Lisa about...
Let's just see, so, section twelve, "Section, the selection of housing and property in the town park be printed and posted on the town website for public use and request of any order. Letter mailed to voting households in the town requesting a copy." So, this...
Yeah, because the only thing that we're, if, if my memory serves correctly, the only...
So, nothing to hear about timing on that.
The only things that we're required to send to the voters before annual town meeting is the warrant and the budget.
Okay.
That, it may include the finance committee's report, too. I'm not sure about that one, but I know the first two were required.
Okay.
But all the, like, you know, reports from different town bodies, et cetera, et cetera, don't have to be part of that. They can be sent at whatever time the town deems appropriate. So, it would simplify the task. I do remember that conversation.
Yeah, you're right, so there was definitely a conversation about that.
There definitely was. Last year, I think, I... There definitely was, last year, I think, when Lisa was talking about it with us or with somebody when we were.
And so if we're breaking that in.
Town website?
Yes.
Annual reports under the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, that is where they are now.
I believe they're posted there, and then I did, I'm learning we have an annual, annual town report committee. Did not know that.
Uh, yep, we do.
So, so that, that's your question. Is it up there? I think they are up there.
Well, the last two years are, anyway. They, before that, there wasn't an electronic version.
Ah.
Lisa was the one that decided, because we had to, we had to provide it to certain contractors who are working on our behalf around state regulatory issues. And they said, send us your town report. And we said, where can we mail it? They said, we need it, we want it electronically. And they said, we didn't have it. So that's when Lisa scanned the first one.
Yeah.
And then in the next year, we made sure that there was an electronic version for that purpose.
Yeah.
Because I wonder if splitting it would actually, and, and not having everything be electronic, I wonder if we would actually incur additional costs that way? Because now we'd be sent, we'd be doing two mailings.
I don't know.
It's two deliveries.
Yeah, but let me, let me clarify this with Lisa.
Okay.
And we can.
But I, I'm definitely with Mary that I think it should be, it should be an opt-in.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I agree with you, because I, I do think there's a generational issue still going on with this. That's, that is very real, and there's no reason why people, people should get information in the way that it's gonna serve them. They're the citizens of the town, not in the way that it's easiest for us.
Right.
Unless there's some astronomical reason why we wouldn't do that.
Right, and I don't think, I mean, I don't have the number in front of me, but the, the annual report is part of the moderator's budget, right?
Uh, no, there's a separate budget line item for it, I think, and it, my recollection is last year it was between fourteen and twenty with printing and mailing and all that stuff.
So we're not, we're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars.
It's tens of thousands of dollars, and low tens of thousands. Okay, I'll get clarification.
I do like the, the point about a question on the census, because as the census results of being tall, and you could, you could easily do an actory, a directory entry where.
Yeah.
Here's our electronic directory.
Or just fill in, you know, or just.
I mean, it seems to make sense that, because clearly somebody's going through the census and taking down all that information. Is that Eloise, or is that, so who?
Eloise and James do it, yeah.
Who calls it, yeah.
You know, or just create a common delimited file and send it to Tom Galvin or Mary Rata or whoever's gonna be keeping records of what gets mailed, what gets, or Barry. Though that, that's probably a bad idea.
The filing clerk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Minutes clerk.
Yes, okay.
That can go to the minutes clerk.
Okay, so I'll ask Lisa for clarification about that, and we can, we can table it for now if that's agreeable to folks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, because I.
Need to be a spoilsport.
No, 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 no.
It's not being a spoilsport.
There is time. If there weren't time, I'd be arguing about it.
Yeah, okay.
In the interest of time, but we have time.
Because Lisa and David's work is brilliant, but.
Yeah. Okay.
Nonetheless.
So, um, here's what I did with the warrant articles. So this is an abbreviated version of the warrant. This double-sided thing here that I handed out to you. I highlighted the article numbers of all the articles that I believe the finance committee needs to have an opinion about. Now, sometimes during the meeting, Barry will turn to us and say, does the finance, like, he'll, he may turn and ask about articles one through six, since they reference a little bit of money, but frankly, they're not. You know, and I'll just nod, or give him a thumbs up. But the ones that are either expense items, where we have to fund them from someplace, or income items, and there are a couple of those this year, I have flagged. And I've also been on the phone with people for the past couple of days tracking down issues with articles that were in some kind of flux. Like, we were told about two weeks ago that the library tight tank was gonna be a hundred and fifty K. I spoke to the library director today and yesterday. They spoke to the select board on Monday, and they talked with an engineer, and they'd sent a query into Mass Department of Environmental Protection, and they now believe it can be done for a hundred. And I said.
Which was the original number?
Yes, and I said, okay, that's the number you want. He said, yes. I said, okay, then that's what you'll get. The subtext was, that's what you're gonna get, get on. So, don't say we didn't double-check with you.
Yeah.
So anyway, that one went to a hundred. What I'd like to do, I don't want to just sort of march through these, because you guys haven't had a chance to look at them yet. If this makes sense to you, the way I'd like to do it is talk to you about the funding, which is this little one-page memo that I had. And then go through here and just touch on each one, so we know what they are, and then we can go back and vote on them, and if, if the funding needs to change, then we can do that. So, okay, so there are two basic sources of funding this year and most years for warrant articles. There's free cash. I yesterday confirmed, double-checked with June on both these numbers of these funding sources. Available free cash as of today is seven hundred and nine thousand dollars. That's certified for use by annual town meeting in May. Unfortunately, the one-time funds coming in from River Bridge Construction, building permits, et cetera, et cetera, isn't gonna show up until next year. There's not enough time between the time they're gonna pay it and the annual town meeting to get it certified and rolled into free cash. So we don't have that.
Do you have any idea how much we're talking about come now?
The last number I heard, which was like six or eight weeks ago, was about three hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. But I'm not sure that was the final number, that was just the number that June had at that point as an estimate.
Permitting, or that would be?
That's permitting.
That would be, that's not revenue to the town on an annual basis?
No, that's permitting, correct.
Wow, okay.
Yep. Those are, that's one-time income. So, there's a standing request from the treasurer's office that we leave at least about two hundred thousand dollars in the free cash account at the end of town meeting. That allows Dennis Room to effectively borrow from ourselves for cash flow instead of needing to actually borrow from a bank or, you know, get a line of credit, so it saves the town some money. So, that's where the free cash spending limit of five hundred and nine thousand dollars comes from, because I want to honor that request. Okay, the second source of funding is the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund. There is currently thirty-five thousand dollars in that fund. Why that?
Actually, I have a question.
Yeah, sure, thank.
I don't know if you can answer this, this is a problem, I'm sure it's a Dennis question. Stabilization.
Yep.
Where at, how much in that right now, do you know?
A little over a million, I think, one point one.
What are the, and the only way to spend that is?
Vote at town annual town meeting.
Okay, so he can't use that as an emergency, as emergency.
We can't use that for float, no.
Yep.
Can't use that for float money.
Okay.
For cash flow coverage. Okay, so there's thirty-five thousand dollars sitting in the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund right now. As a note, I think that should have gone into the town budget, but it did not. This year it will. The bill that's been sent to Highland Commons that for the past several years they've paid in a timely fashion, meaning we've gotten the money before town meeting, is for five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Those added together is the six hundred and four. So, that's where that comes from. Why don't I just quickly walk through these, because I, since I've looked at them all so much in the past week and a half, I'll remember them. Article thirteen is the tight tank for the library. Fourteen is the compactor for the transfer station. Eighteen seven eighty-five is the mowers for the cemetery commission. Fifty-three hundred, I don't remember what that one is off the top of my head. Forty-seven thousand is a police cruiser, if I remember correctly. It's either the, no, sorry, that's the.
Four-wheel drive truck with.
Forty, forty, yeah, forty-seven thousand is the new, is the new highway barn truck. And the seventy K, you have it in front of you.
Seventy's the highway hot top.
Seventy's the hot top for the highway. Five thousand is the planning board. I had to lower the amount going into stabilization this year from two fifty to a hundred and seventy to make funding for other things work. But that's a hundred and seventy going into stabilization. I'd like to make sure that we put money in stabilization every year that we can until we get up to, I'd have to go back and check what the percentage is right now. We're slightly, I think we're above the recommended percentage, if my memory serves, but, you know, that's the state recommendation as opposed to what we might want to have. The four thousand eighty-seven is money for the energy committee. Twenty thousand is the snow and ice overage that we, I was just talking with the select board about earlier, that we'll need, have a special town meeting to fund before the annual town meeting. And then thirty thousand dollars in free cash. I, I talked to Fire and EMS. We do not have the money to be able to afford the two hundred and, it's either two twenty-five or two fifty, I don't remember which it is off the top of my head, for the self-contained breathing apparatus for Fire and EMS. We just don't have the money with the fire truck on the warrant this year. So.
Article twenty-three.
Yes, so I checked in with the interim chief and the interim deputy chief, and they're gonna get back to me by Friday. This is a life and death issue, potentially. You know, they need this equipment if they're gonna go into a fire, and it has to be certified for use. What we have now, most of it is, is no longer certifiable, it's beyond its, its legal use date. So, I, I told them today, I know I can get you seventy K. Thirty from free cash and forty from Highland Commons. And I told them, if, if it's, if you come back to me and tell us we need another fifty, then we could pull fifty more out of what's going into stabilization and give it to them for that purpose, to get them through this next year until next annual town meeting, when I think we'll be able to afford what they want. So that's what's going on with that. Did that all make sense?
It does. I think the firemen were talking about that last week, weren't they?
Yes, they're having trouble right now getting together enough equipment to send new fire trainees to fire school.
Yeah, that was, that was what he was talking about.
Yes, and so they're gonna be coming to us separately to talk about some money for this, this year to get the equipment enough for them to be able to do that. Anyway, they also told me the town of Northborough had bought new equipment and changed the type of equipment they were using to a different supplier. And so they have used equipment that is still within its legal lifespan, and they're gonna check with Northborough about that as another possible means of getting equipment to get them through till next year. But I want to give them as much as we can.
So, so the seventy thousand would be to hopefully buy them the minimal.
What they need.
They can at least get the trainees trained and that sort of thing.
And, and to make sure that, that people fighting fires in town are safe. I told them, you know, come back and tell us what you need. Like, we can't give you the two twenty-five, we don't have it. I mean, that's just flat out, we don't have it.
Two seventy-five.
And so I guess.
Oh, two seventy-five is what they wanted?
Two seventy-five is.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we, yeah, we got it.
Right, so I guess what I'm asking is, is what is the piecemeal approach going to gain us? Or do we need that information from them?
They're gonna come back to us by Friday and let us know.
Okay, because the two seventy-five was to wholesale replace.
Correct.
Everything.
All the self-contained breathing apparatus, the bottles, the masks, the tubing, the blah, 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 blah.
Because I guess I'm wondering, I mean, this, this could be like the cemetery mower issue where, or was it the mower, or was it something else where we, they'd capital plan and tried to give them half the money this year, half the money next year, but it didn't work out because it wasn't really two separate things, it was really one thing, and so doing one doesn't help.
And they may come back and tell us, you know, I, I mean, I told Jim, I understand that this is a, a life and death safety issue conceivably, and so you and Jamie need to come back and tell us what the real answer is on this and what, what you're comfortable doing. I just told them, we don't have the two seventy-five.
Okay.
Like, we don't, you know, like, I tried playing with it lots of different ways, but it isn't there. The trouble is, if the fire truck warrant on the warrant, and the fire truck is equally as urgent, that's the one that we paid for the emergency repair on last week, the pumper tanker. And I think it only makes about twenty or twenty-five miles an hour uphill right now. It's a nineteen eighty-one truck that wasn't originally designed for this purpose. It's been adapted, and it's worked well for decades, but it's dying. So, we can't, we can't put that one off. They did take the pickup truck off. That's what bought me the, the forty K out of the Highland Commons money. They're perfectly comfortable putting that off till next year. So, anyway, we'll get a final answer from them by Friday about that. Okay, last things, I told you the twenty K is for snow and ice. And then over here under the Highland Commons Fund, the four forty is the fire truck. The fifty is small equipment replacement for the fire department. We can do that. The forty-seven, Article twenty-nine, I think is a police cruiser. And the fifteen K, Article thirty-one, is tasers and some other equipment the police department wants. So, that's how I put all that together. You know, I, I, I played with numbers to try to find a way to get the two seventy-five, but I just couldn't, it, it ended up closing the library and doing other things that just weren't, I, I, you know, I couldn't find an easy way to do it. And I'm, I'm personally unwilling to not put anything in stabilization, because my sense is the economy is slowing. We haven't put anything in stabilization for a couple of years, and I'm very, anything substantial in stabilization for a couple of years, and I am not happy about that. I want to make sure that we have a rainy day fund that we can draw on reliably when the economy slows down. So anyway, this, this represents my past several days of work on this. Any questions about that?
Thank you.
Makes sense on its face?
It does.
Yeah, I mean, we can change things, like, you know, if we want, that's fine. This is just how it looked to me.
So is there anything that's, so what is not funded? I mean, do you have anything we have to try to shoot horn in, or is there anything we?
What did not get funded, if you go through here, the public safety building roof.
Okay.
Which Dave said we could put off for another year. It's got another theoretical year of life in, in the design of the shingles.
Okay.
I agree that it needs to be replaced, but it's not urgent for this year.
This is the roof over our head as we speak.
Uh, it's the public, is this the public safety building?
Well, it's combined, the public safety wing would be that side, but I don't know if it's the entire roof or.
They said it's not leaking. They, they know it's gonna start leaking.
I actually was wondering the same thing, Mary. I don't know, when they say public safety building, do they mean the entire building?
I don't know.
Or do they just mean that?
I don't think so, because I'm not sure you could do this, the roof of this whole building for eighty-five K, given the size.
Probably not.
That would be my guess. So, that public safety, Article twenty, would be going, and by the way, there's no Article eighteen, and there wasn't in the original document that the select board sent out to the town board, so if you're wondering where it is, there wasn't one.
The mythical.
The mythical Article eighteen, it's like the thirteenth floor of the buildings, it just isn't there. It just isn't there. So anyway, Article 20 is going, um, Article 25, the pickup truck is going. That's with the agreement of Fire and EMS, as I mentioned. And Article 30, the video security system for this building, uh, principally for the public safety section of the building is going. And Chief Galvin was comfortable with that because right now they're looking more broadly at the town buildings to see, you know, do they want video coverage in more areas than that?
Okay.
So he said he was fine with rolling that into that process. Um, this, the, the sticky part of the wicket, though happily it's a, it's probably a small amount of money, are bills that did not come in in a timely fashion.
I guess those.
Article 26, um, we have dollar amounts on two of them, but it looks to me like there's, there might be more than two of them there. Article 26, Article 27.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but the dollar amounts are sufficiently modest on the two that I see that it's not causing me concern. But I'm not comfortable voting on, you know, I'm comfortable voting on the 485, 41 and the 99, 99, but I don't think we should vote on something where we don't even have the bloody bill in front of us. That's silly.
Right. Cause which one, what don't we have though on? This is the.
It's unclear to me from the way that Article 26 is written, um, whether that 485, 41 is the comprehensive amount of the two bills or not.
Right. Cause no text figures received yet from Fire Department, vendor one.
Yes. And we, to the best of my knowledge, and I, I pinged Chris about this last week, we do not yet have the warrant back from town council, which makes me very cranky.
Yeah. So in theory, there's two other bills here that they are not delineating.
So I'm gonna suggest that we vote on the ones that are specifically delineated by dollar amount and then we can vote on the others, uh, if they're available to us. We, we have at times in the past, uh, held a 15, 20 minute meeting before the beginning of the annual town meeting to deal with any final issues and deal with it there. Cause if they haven't shown us a bill, we can't vote to approve it.
No.
Cause we didn't even know the amount.
Right.
So anyway, those are the things that have been, that have been struck off as pushed off till next year, well, and the 275.
So just so I understand, these are, these are, these are bills that accrued before June 30, 18?
Correct.
Oh dear.
Right.
Yes. And I have been, I have been cranky at town meeting with people about this twice now. And a quick, a quick aside, um, I'm gonna take Tom Galvin's suggestion and some of the people's suggestion that we have a budget meeting at the beginning of the budget process that's mandatory, that every town body that has a budget has to send a representative. You know, representative means a person, right? They just have to send somebody that can answer questions and get information in a useful fashion. If they don't, they get level funded at best. We might cut their budget, but the most they're gonna get is level funded. Um, and one thing I'm gonna say to them, cause I've been hearing from, um, other town, the, from the treasurer and the accountant, there are town offices that are not tracking their finances during the course of the year. And that's why we're getting these. So, well, sometimes vendors submit bills late, right? And that I understand. But unless the vendor submitted the bill late, then I don't want to see any more of these. So at that meeting, I want to tell people, you need to track your budgets during the course of the year. You need to, you know, institute a purchase order process or whatever you gotta do. If we need to get you training, we can get you training. But if we hear that you're not tracking your budgets during the year and that turns out to be problematic for the warrant by bills showing up that weren't dealt with or by giving June and Dennis extra work, then we're gonna put you on a budget watch list or otherwise rain on your parade.
And when do we close our books for the town after June 30? What, how long does it take before we close them?
I don't know.
Cause that's the window, you want all this stuff to come in.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Isn't, I think it's like two weeks. I mean, we only have to like middle of July to get.
Well, we have, we have.
To close the books?
I thought so.
We have 10, we have 10 days to make final adjustments, cause we will have a final meeting like on July 8th or 12th.
Right.
But I don't know, like by when does June have to close the books? I think it's pretty soon, but I don't know exactly what the date is.
Okay.
It's a law somewhere.
Oh, I know it is. I think it's within 30 or 45 days, but I'm not sure I'm right. It might be less than that. Um, but anyway, we always do have that final squeak meeting.
Yes.
Cause we're permitted to make any final adjustments to the budget, um, for 10 days after the end of the fiscal year, I believe. Okay. Anyway. So are we ready to start?
So everything else is?
Everything else. Um, I, I struck most of the ones, I pulled the language out, but left the article numbers in for the verbose ones that aren't relevant for this meeting as far as I could determine. Like, okay. But if you see anywhere you think I'm wrong about that, please let me know. Um, okay.
Well, just as an example, so number 40, like conservation, 45, 46, I mean, these are, we just leaving these out?
Um, well, the one for conserva, the one for conservation that we have to vote on, um, we do have to vote, well, 45 and 46 are, are highlighted because they do involve either expenditure of monies or potential income.
Right.
And however, I checked with June yesterday about the amount of money in the conservation account and they currently have about $260,000 in their account. So they can spend 130 and we're, they're not drawing on other town funds.
Okay.
So that's Article 45. Article 46 is, is an income article. It's paying the lieu of taxes.
Yeah, I just, I saw 45, it had a dollar amount.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I did, I did check that.
Okay. There's not anybody that's looking, there's not a hundred thousand dollars of requests here that we're just not, I just want, cause I, I just want to make sure that this list is, is that this is everything, right?
It should be. There is also in here.
We need to tell them we're rejecting them, right?
Absolutely, yes. There is also in here, one that I did flag, it's the Cable Access Committee, but that's money coming in from the cable companies under the law about local cable access. It's a special fund. It's not coming out of the town budget. We just have to authorize them to use it.
Got it.
So we do have to vote on that, but.
Okay.
Hello, Cable Access.
I was just gonna say.
We know you're over there. Yeah. But otherwise.
This is how you make sure he's funded.
Absolutely. They're like, hi, we're here with Mr. Smiley to make sure, not you, the camera, I mean, you're Mr. Smiley too right now, but you know, we haven't voted against you yet.
Well, you can say Mr. Smiley and his helper and we just decide who, what's what.
Yeah, exactly. But in answer to your question, yes, there are a handful of articles in here, including like the Anna Hunt Library Fund, which is 50 bucks a year. Anna Hunt, bless her bones. Still giving the library 50 bucks, you know?
Yep.
Generations later.
So this isn't really the controversial part because this is, we're, we're, we have, we have fundings for all the articles.
Yes. This should give.
Controversial will be the budget piece and how much we can actually afford.
Yeah, that's next, that's next week. Um, what was I thinking? I was thinking something. If I'm out of my head, if it's important, it'll come back to me. And if it doesn't, then maybe I'll cry, but otherwise we're fine. Okay. So shall we start going through this?
Sure.
Okey dokey. Uh, so I don't think there's anything in the first six articles that we need to vote on. Those are our revolving funds that have independent funding sources outside of the town budget, to the best of my knowledge. Library video fines, dog licensing, the town hall is for revenues coming in for people renting the 1870 Town Hall. Uh, I'm not sure where the recreation money is coming from, but to the best of my knowledge, it's not coming from us. And Article 5, you know, the, the Article 1 through 6, I believe, always can vote on as a block.
Yep.
So anyway, if Barry looks at me, I'll go, sounds good, Barry.
Thumbs up.
Yeah. People were really entertained by my thumbs up. I was honestly just trying to save time, cause like Scott would get up and, you know, go over the microphone, Mr. Moderator, whoa, 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 yes. And then go sit down. And I'm like, it might only save 10 minutes by the end of the meeting, but I'm okay with that.
10 minutes is 10 minutes.
Yes. Okay. So I think it is the case that the first one that we need to vote on is Article 12, which is the Cable Access Fund. And that's them drawing $48,500 out of the PEG Access and Cable Grant Fund that is what funds their work. And again, that is a funding source that comes from the cable companies, uh, not from the town. So I think all we need to say is yes. Or we could say no and see what happens. But do I hear a motion about that?
Yeah. How do we, how do we need to do these motions? Do we need to say that we, we've, we agree to this?
The, the, the question is, does the Finance Committee support this article as written?
Okay.
That's what the moderator will ask. And, cause we have to answer two questions on every article that's an, that's an expense article. Do we approve it as written and where's the money coming from, whether we approve it or not? Cause people could approve it over our objection and we still have to say where the money's gonna come from in case.
So would you say that we, we vote an amendment that support, we, we vote to support this amendment?
That we sup, that we support Article 12 is.
That we support, okay. So I would move that we support Article 12.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So that's three, zero, yes. And what I'll do, um, I'm gonna include this in the minutes. Um, I will email this out to you folks tomorrow and give you a day or two to look it over and make sure that it looks correct. Um, or if you have any buyer's remorse or anything exciting like that. And then once, once that's.
I'll use all my buyer's remorse on my car. I won't have any buyer's remorse on anything else.
Then I'll, then I'll, I'll pass this along to Eloise and Barry and the select gritters and everybody else that wants to know. Okay. Um, Article 13, this is the tight tank for the library septic. And again, I confirm with them that it's a hundred thousand dollars. And this I have on the schedule to come from free cash.
So I'll make the motion that we approve this article.
Do I hear, do I hear a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, the transfer station wants their compactor. Thirty-seven thousand dollars, I have it in the schedule here, also is coming from free cash.
I move to approve Article 14.
I second the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Coming from free cash.
Aye, coming from free cash, correct?
From free cash.
Yes. Yeah. It's not eligible for public safety funding and, you know, we might be able to wheel some money out of somebody for it, but right now it's free cash. All right. The replacement mowing equipment for the Cemetery Commission, Article 15, uh, 18,785 dollars.
I move that we approve Article 15.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 I'm sorry, aye?
Aye, okay, that's.
I was just actually looking at this 18,000 dollars for a mower. That's a lot of money for a mower.
Yeah, it's, it's a specialized mower that's designed to go around gravestones. So it'll like do, cause I, we asked them about it.
Hmm.
Cause yeah, I was thinking, why don't you just go to Village Power, you know?
It's gotta be something cheaper than that.
Exactly. Okay.
It's a walker mower.
It's the brand.
All right. So the Council on Aging is looking for $5,300 for software that would help them digitize their records. And they get a lot of paper and the current executive director wants to be able to digitize the records as they come in, which I think is, is a worthy thing to be doing.
I move that we approve Article 16.
Do I hear a second?
Aye, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that is also free cash. Uh, Highway Service Utility Truck, um, the Highway Superintendent has requested $47,000 to get a new truck. That would also be coming from free cash. That's in the schedule as well.
Utility truck, this is, is this just a pickup or is this more than a pickup?
It's a three-quarter ton utility body, which I think is bigger than a pickup, but I'm not an expert.
Four-wheel drive truck with plow and any other cars. So is there, is this repl, this is, replaces the current aged utility truck.
Yeah. I know it's in the Capital Planning Committee's plan for this year and they've gone through all the, with David and they're on a schedule.
So David's behind this.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. He submitted it. At Capital Planning.
The puppet strings behind.
Exactly. And they've got them on a, now the police department, the fire, the fire department and the, um, who are the other ones? Police, fire.
Highway.
Highway, them. They're all on a schedule for replacing vehicles in a timely fashion.
And this is just part of that.
This is part of that schedule, yes.
So the guys are kind of taking turns. This is your year to get the big truck and next year.
Exactly. Yes. You get to drive the crappy truck this year.
Which was the goal of, of the Capital Planning Commission.
Yes, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Plot all that out.
Yeah. Okay. Do I hear a motion about Article 17?
I move that we approve Article 17 with the money from free cash.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's three zeros as well. Okay, we have the annual hot top appropriation. This is for filling in potholes around town and other road repairs.
I move that we approve this money. Before I get out on my bike.
Okay. Um, do I hear a motion on Article 18?
The marriage is made.
I just made the motion.
Oh, okay. Do I, do I hear a second?
I move that we approve Article 19.
I will interpret the, the members.
Second, yes.
Yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that's three, zero. Now, I haven't heard back from David as to whether he is willing to withdraw the motion for the public safety building roof. So I'm going to recommend that we oppose it and source it as raise and appropriate. Cause that'll make it about as dead as we can make it. Raise and appropriate means straight onto the tax bill, baby. Um, so, uh, do I hear a motion for Article 20, the public safety bill, public safety building roof?
Well, just as a matter of questioning, when you say it goes directly on the tax bill.
Mm-hmm.
What is the, I don't know this by now, but what is the, how is that different than two and a half than?
Um, well, right now, we have the five to seven years worth of.
Levy capacity.
Levy capacity that we didn't use. So this would, this would pull out of the levy capacity.
Okay.
And I swear, despite the fact that Dennis will come after me with a hatchet and the Select Board will make frowny faces at me, I am totally gonna go to the 7:00 AM crowd, 7:00 AM on Friday and explain that to them so they can get behind a citizen's petition to reduce our, our levy capacity. Um, anyway, um, do I hear a motion, that is where we come from. Do I hear a motion on Article 20?
I move that we oppose this article.
A nice second.
All right. All those.
And, and say the source of funding.
The source of funding is raise and appropriate. Uh, all those, um, supporting a vote to oppose Article 20, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we vote three, uh, zero to three against. All right. Uh, next article in the hit parade is the master plan funding for the planning board, Article 21. Basically, the planning board needs something like 20 or 40K every few years.
Yeah, I'd like to oppose this every once in a while, just to, haven't we done, haven't we come up with this master plan yet? I mean, how long does it take?
We're required by the state, we're required by the state to do one about every five years, if I recall correctly.
And so that we pay for a portion of it each year.
Right. And the, the planning board just pays, just saves it in increments and then rather than doing one article every X years, they, this is easier for them to remember, I suspect.
But the master plan, what is it, it's the, what the overall zoning is for each district in the.
And what the, and what the town's intention is for development. I don't, I don't know everything that's in it, I mean, it includes, I think.
Is that a public document?
It is a public document, yes.
And it's available at the planning office or it's available?
It should be available. Well, you can ask Tim Wheeler, I would bet they have it in the assessor's office. But it is a public document, because we have to use it when we're applying for grant money, we have to use it when we're applying for state funding. It, it answers a whole lot of questions related to some funding sources and it makes sure that we update regulations and bylaws in a timely fashion. That's what I know of it, but.
Yeah, I think it's every five years and it costs them twenty-five to do it, so.
So, that is the story behind it.
There is a, there is a little line of text right there standing at the bottom of that article that says.
The article continues the process.
Completing one part of the master plan.
No, I, I just, it feels like they ought to be done with it by now, that's all I'm saying.
It's a cyclical function.
It's like, uh, doc, uh, when, when doctors are in practice, you, you ought to be done by now, you shouldn't be practicing, you should be, you should be a doctor by now.
Think of it, think of it like a colonoscopy, you do it every, every X number of years.
Whether you want to or definitely not. If you want to, there might be something seriously wrong.
See, we're gonna have much better ratings, I mean, the zoning board of appeals is a lot like a reality show, so we're not gonna have as good ratings, just so they know. But there we are, okay, so do I hear a motion on Article twenty-one?
I move that we approve Article twenty-one.
Relax, I'm second, no, I said.
Sure, I understand, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, so that is approved, okay. Article twenty-two is the replacement for our elderly pumper tanker and this is also the, and this is stated in the article. This is where Paul Spakowski came in as the interim fire chief, looked at our fleet and said, why do you have an A and a B when you can just buy an A point five and it could do the job of both?
Right.
So this is what that is, so this is permanently removing the purchase of a fire vehicle from the town's capital needs out into the future. Which I'm in favor of, so four hundred and forty thousand dollars, this would be coming from the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund as a.
And this replaces the one that we just, we voted that emergency money to fix, because that's the key one tanker.
That is the one, and I've seen, they, they showed me pictures of it when I had a meeting with the fire and police chief and it has a lot of rust.
Does it?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure they took pictures of all the rust to, they had like eight of them, they were very impressive. Lots of like red flaking paint coming off, and it was around the couplings, it was just like, you know, where the salt had gotten to the tire wells or something, so.
Yeah, and, and the summary says, it does say the replacing too, the nineteen ninety-seven pumper and the nineteen eighty-one tanker.
Yes. Yep, so do I hear a motion on Article twenty-two?
I move that we approve Article twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's approved. I'm gonna suggest we pass over making a decision on the self-contained breathing apparatus until we hear back from the fire department on Friday, so we'll make a final vote on that next week. Because they'll give us their brass tax number for what they feel like they need. So the next one after that is Article twenty-four, which is the miscellaneous fire and EMS equipment. As soon as I told Jim that they weren't getting the scuba stuff, he said, do we get the other equipment? I said, well, we have the money for it, so I think you probably will, he said, oh, good, so anyway, that was his response to that question. Do I hear a motion on Article twenty-four for replacing miscellaneous equipment for fire and EMS?
I move that we approve Article twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved from the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund. Article twenty-five has been struck removed at the request of the interim fire chief. Okay, now we get to the interesting Article twenty-six. I am going to recommend that we specifically say to the moderator, and I, I'll double check on Article twenty-six to see if we have the, all the bills in yet, that we specifically say, if we vote to approve this, and it would be coming, by the way, from free cash, that we are voting to approve, approve the four hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-one cents. If there are additional bills, unless they're presented to us, then no soap. So that's my recommendation. Do we hear, do I hear a motion on that recommendation related to Article twenty-six?
Let me give it a try buzz.
Sure, sure.
We approve Articles twenty-six with a limitation to the stated four hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-one cents.
Okay, approved for no more than four eight five point four one, got it.
Second.
All those in favor of that, that motion as worded, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and I think, um, I love this summary, self-explanatory, isn't that a way to get yourself in trouble? Article twenty-seven, see if the town will, okay, by the way, the twenty-six funding source is free cash.
Ah, okay.
Because these, these amounts are so small that they can come out of free cash without any trouble on the scale.
That's not on your thing here, but that's.
No, but it won't, it won't matter, because we're, we're under the limit by about fifteen, about eh, eighteen hundred and thirty-some, eighteen hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So we can cover, you know, six hundred bucks, give or take for these two things. Okay, so Article twenty-seven, I recommend the same wording that, it looks like this is the only bill for this one, I'm just being cautious. That we approve this for no more than the ninety-nine ninety-nine cited.
Yeah, I move that we approve Article twenty-seven with the, what did we say last time? With the, for, for, to not to exceed ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Yep. Okay, all those in.
Free cash.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm just writing this down, approved not to exceed ninety-nine ninety-nine, source is free cash. If I didn't say aye, I hereby say aye, so that's three to zero, okay. Article twenty-nine, this is the regular schedule that we have for replacing police cruisers, has negotiated and arranged between the police department, among the police department, the select board and the capital planning committee. Forty-seven thousand dollars coming from the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund, do I hear a motion on Article twenty-nine?
Question first, is, what do they do? I know that sometimes they repurpose used vehicles for other inspectors and so forth.
Yep.
Otherwise, what do they do, do they just go to auction?
Sell them, yeah.
And then that money, but goes to free cash, I mean, we only ever really see the expenditure, we're not ever seeing any income from these.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, it comes to free cash, but you can include that in your email to June if you want. Dear June, when we sell a car, what happens? Yeah, I think they either, in the past, I've seen them be hand-me-downs to other departments, I think now, as my recollection is the general plan is not to do that unless it's an exception and it seems like a good idea.
And every five years is to get them, is to the point so that we're not just spending a lot of money on repairs.
Correct.
Because do we even know how many miles we're on a vehicle that they, that they're turning in?
I don't remember.
They, they go, they run a lot of miles.
Yeah, they do, right, because they're driving, they're pretty much moving all the time.
I do know that the capital planning committee had a conversation about that and figuring out with the police chief where the number of years was that would roughly, you know, keep the mileage down, keep, stop us from having excessive repair bills and still have enough market value to make it worth selling. That seems to be, yeah, the five years is the number we came up with.
Did you say you approved this one? Were you waiting on my second, or did we?
I move that we approve Article twenty-nine for the police cruiser, with the funds to come from the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. This is the less than riveting part of the meeting, in case you were wondering.
Hard to imagine.
Yeah, noticed you nodding off over there, so we're trying to help you.
Barbara's still awake.
Oh, yeah, I know, you want some coffee?
I'm offering things you don't have, you sound like my mother-in-law now.
However.
Would you like seconds on that? Barbara, there isn't any.
But I'll bet if you asked Eloise, she'd know where you can get you some.
That's not, no, that's always.
She does that all over.
Okay, so Article thirty has been, is gonna be removed, struck with agreement from the police department, as discussed earlier. Article thirty-one is the radios, tasers and active shooter equipment, which sounds kind of like a video game to me, but it's not. Okay, however, one change on this one is it has been moved from free cash over to Highland Commons Public Safety. Because I reworked this worksheet multiple times and trying to accommodate things and then didn't, didn't reflect that change in what was written here, so I'll change that.
I move to approve Article thirty-one.
Alrighty.
Money coming from Highland Commons.
Public Safety Fund, do I hear a second?
Yes, seconded.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, okay. Now, um, my cunning plan is to amend on the floor of town meeting or to change the wording, if we can change the wording before it goes into the, the warrant, the actual final warrant, the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars down to one hundred and seventy. Because I couldn't make the two fifty work, there wasn't enough money, but I could make one seventy work, so. So we'll change the amount to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which is coming from free cash. With that amendment, do I hear a motion on Article thirty-two to put a hundred and seventy K into the stabilization fund?
I move that we approve Article thirty-two.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Article thirty-three is approving the creation of a special purpose stabilization fund, which is a possibility contemplated under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty, Section five B. It'll be funded in part by a point, by one tenth cent per kilowatt hour surcharge, which is, the immediate need is to collect funds raised through provision of the town's municipal aggregation fund to allow the town to apply a small surcharge of point oh oh one cent, oh oh one, it says dollar, but it's a tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour to fund energy conservation measures for the average household, this surcharge amounts to less than a dollar per month. So anyway, the only question is, do we approve of the creation of this fund?
And this is obviously something brand new, this is not.
Yeah, we haven't, you know, it is, it is one of those things that the state provides as something that town can do.
And then the next one is putting money into it.
The next one is they're asking if the town will place four thousand eighty-seven dollars into the, into the fund.
In other words, basically to start it off.
Right.
And then going forward to repeat the surcharge.
That is what it should be, we should keep an eye on that, though. But, you know, the amounts were sufficiently small and it has its own funding mechanism, but we do have to, we do have to speak on Articles thirty-three and thirty-four in one way or the other.
I'm always a fan of conservations.
Okay.
I would vote to approve.
Okay, do I hear a second, the motion to approve Article thirty-three is written?
Stan moved all second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving Article thirty-three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Article thirty-four is seed money for the fund created in Article forty-three, it's relatively modest, four thousand eighty-seven dollars. That would come from free cash.
I move to approve Article thirty-four.
Do I?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is three zero. We do not have to speak on Article thirty-five as a group. I plan as a citizen to stand up and say something about that at town meeting, because my worry is that it's already hard for towns of our size to hire a fire chief. And if we make it a weak chief, I think it's gonna make it even more difficult to hire somebody, because most towns are doing strong chief. And it makes their jobs, it's easier for them to do their jobs. Anyway, but it's not an income or an expense item, so I don't, my opinion is we shouldn't as a body speak on it unless the two of you strongly disagree.
No, I don't think that it's our place to really speak on it.
Okie dokie.
Personally.
I don't, I don't, actually, I have no idea what's going on. I prefer not to talk when I don't know what's going on, yeah, except to say I don't know what's going on, so.
I've read the whole long graphic novel about it, I can tell you if you want to know, but not, probably not during the meeting.
Later.
Yes, I agree. Okay, Article thirty-six is a tax collector demand fee. If they don't pay Dennis in a timely fashion, he's gonna slap fifteen bucks on their bill, which is authorized by Mass General Laws.
And we don't already have this?
No. We have it for the excise tax only.
Only?
Yeah.
Interesting. But they're still late, they're still interest, they're still interest accrued if you don't pay your taxes on time, isn't there?
I have paid late stuff on taxes, because I just missed it, you know, I'm busy and I forgot.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, I think, a way of.
There's no bridge, I mean.
There, there is, yeah, but I don't.
There's just not the demand, not this actual fifteen dollar demand?
We don't have that now, to the best of my knowledge, I mean, he's asking for it, so I don't think we have.
I think, I think that's right, I think there's some sort of running interest that you get hit with.
Yeah.
I haven't done that in a long time, but.
I think this is just a way to.
Summary, your problem, it's when excising, it's when excise tax payments are received late, taxpayers have a one-day grace period. After that demand fee currently ten is added and the interest starts accruing. Practice, most communities accept payments up to two weeks later, as long as the main interest is. Fifteen dollar demand fee is a more efficient collection tool. So this actually, this is for excise tax, no?
Is it?
I mean, the explanation says all taxes by excise.
Summary says excise tax payments.
Ah, okay.
At the first part of the article, on a fee, a part of the tax. So maybe if you went to that section of the Mass General Law, you'd see that it is excise tax, but.
Okay.
The summary is telling us it's excise, not real estate, so.
Yeah, I know the excise, like, it's one of those, if you don't pay it within a certain amount of time, you get whacked with more, and then if you don't pay it within a certain amount of time, I guess that it's more and more and more. I did, when I first moved to Berlin, both Arlington and Berlin thought that my car was parked there. And I was late paying the Berlin fee, so I got like whackity-whack, I think I got a double whack, paying Berlin, but that's a long time ago.
Yeah, we've had that issue and then they send you back the check, like he says, sending back the check and then the time to take the, get the process, the payment process later.
Yep. Do we want to give Dennis this fifteen bucks?
Yeah, I, I vote to approve Article thirty-six.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving Article thirty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that is an income article, so we don't have to say anything else about it. Senior residential development, we don't need to deal with, name change, we don't need to deal with, the single-use bag ban, I don't think we need to deal with. There are potentially fines. Yeah, single-use bag man, I think that's, I think, I think that's a different bylaw, Stan. No, it's probably a good idea from a logistics perspective.
I would think so, yes.
Okay, now, there is one, we, the, the finance committee was the committee that originally sponsored the Community Preservation Act, which has been passed by the town, and I was currently informed by the secretary to the select board that someone had to sponsor the creation of the Community Preservation Committee, which is the committee that receives the grant applications and distributes the funds to the applications that, well, they don't actually distribute the funds, they recommend town meeting which ones to get funded. So this bylaw creates the Community Preservation Committee and the select board edited it, edited it and turned it into the Community Preservation Act Committee, fine, okay, no big deal. This is a model bylaw that we got, we being the people that advocated for CPA, from the Community Preservation Coalition, which is the semi-public entity that advocates in the legislature for the Community Preservation Act and that helps communities pass it and understand how it works. So, since we're sponsoring it, it seemed to make sense to me that we would vote to approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's for Article forty-one, okay, so that's three zero on Article forty-one. Okay. Article forty-two. Oh, yeah, 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 that's the one that, that's the one that we're gonna pass over for now, while, I'll ask for clarification from Lisa as we discussed. Okay. I do not think we need to speak to the tax title stuff. I think it is the case that those are properties that the town has, is coming into possession of, because they are orphans and haven't paid their taxes or no law, whatever the case may be. So I don't think we need to speak to that, Barry may ask, if he asks, I'm just gonna stick my thumb up in the air and say sure.
All in favor, take and grab, pick your foot up. Just ask if there's any super fund cleanups, if any of these are super fund cleanup sites.
Yes, that, that is an important consideration, okay. Article forty-five is to see if the town will approve the Conservation Commission, I think they're buying a property and or buying the, let's see, Town and Conservation Commission have entered into an agreement with Sudbury Valley Trustees and the Windler family to purchase approximately thirty acres on Peachill Road. This land adds to existing conservation land both in Berlin and Bolton, creates a wildlife corridor, et cetera, et cetera. Again, I confirmed with June yesterday that they have about two hundred and sixty-some K in this account, so they can spend a hundred and thirty and we don't have to worry about it. But since they're expending money, they will ask us if we approve of it or not.
All right, I approve of them spending their own money, sure.
Okay, do I hear a second if approving them spending their own money?
If you want to put it that way, I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. This, Article forty-six, the final one. This is a lot like what cities, particularly large cities do with major nonprofits like universities where they have payments in lieu of taxes, because technically, like Harvard, et cetera, et cetera, are probably exempt from local property taxes, but when, when nonprofits get big enough, cities start going and they go to them and say, hey, so, you know.
You're taking up an awful lot of.
Do you wanna, do you wanna, do you wanna fight us in court about property taxes or do you wanna?
Boston has a huge amount of that.
I know that, yeah, well, DC is the one that has the biggest problem with it, because there are huge numbers of nonprofits in Washington DC.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's what this is on a much smaller scale for Berlin and they want to approach the people that are putting in solar arrays and say, hey.
So you want to give us a payment in lieu of taxes for that?
And I suspect we'll be asked if we approve, because it is effectively a, a tax measure.
Um, so we're, we're, we would be approving that we're gonna, that we would be asking for payment in lieu of taxes, but not a certain dollar amount. lieu of taxes, but not a certain dollar amount, just the concept of doing it?
Correct.
Because we don't currently have that concept in the books now?
No.
Or we don't have the mechanism to do that currently?
See, the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax agreement for payments in lieu of taxes pursuant to blah, blah, blah. So it's, it's accounted for.
Specifically for this solar array? This isn't to be able to just do it in general, this is.
Let's see if it's for a specific solar array, it looks like it might be.
It's on a 21.4 acre parcel privately owned.
Assessors, yeah, this is for a specific one.
Okay.
So it's a one-time payment in lieu of taxes, so this is an.
So I mean, this has already been approved by the plan, I mean, this, this array already exists, or is going to be built based on.
Yes.
Planning slash zoning ability.
And this is the selectmen, the selectmen are going to wander over to the people who own it and say.
Sidle up to them.
Sidle up to them and say, so, I'm on camera, so I won't say what I might normally say, but.
Good choice.
Yes, but it's effectively a tax measure.
Yeah, I would, I vote to approve.
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye, aye, that's three to zero. All right, that went more quickly than I thought it might. Alrighty, so, that's the last item on tonight's agenda.
Agenda.
Yes, and I will.
The house pen.
Sure thing. I will check in with Lisa about the opt-in and split mailing, and it's the various questions that we have about the article that we're being asked to sponsor, and let you know what they say, and there was one other I was supposed to ask questions about, that I believe I wrote in here. Let me just take a quick look, or it may be the same one. I think, yes, okay, I'll double check in here. So anyway, tomorrow, I'll email this out as what would be an addendum to minutes for folks to look at, and, you know, just take, take a gander at it, make sure it reflects what we did here tonight. We won't finalize the ones we have questions about, ah, the fire stuff, until I hear, so that'll be next week.
Yeah.
Next week, we'll also act on the budget. I'm planning on doing something similar to this, in the sense that I will put the budget together, I will, there'll be a, I have, by the way, confirmed the income side of our budget, which is here. This is a memo that we, we shared with the select board back in October, and the 2.5% potential additional levy amount is correct, I verified that with Molly in the assessor's office. This is the new growth that we did not use last year, that we have available as income this year, and we usually use a very conservative expected new growth number. We can raise this if we want to, I said can raise 50K, June and I agreed we could probably go to 200 if we wanted to, but I'd like to keep it conservative. So this amounts to $648,854 of potential income that we could use, we don't have to tap the full, I would be happy if we didn't tap the full 2.5%, but we'll see. This will be compared on a, you know, a reconciliation page, this income, these income numbers against the requested expenses. My sense, as may be yours, well, you're brand new, so you may not have sense, but my sense is, we're being asked for more than we can afford. We'll see, you know, if the gods are feeling kind, I may be wrong, and we may be able to afford things, then we can decide if we think there are things we might decide for other reasons not to fund, that we just think people are being overly generous to themselves, or otherwise, things we might not deem that we want to fund. But my sense is, we're going to end up needing to cut again this year. Last year, I think we had, my sense is, last year, we didn't have as many large requests as we do this year, and we ended up with $800,000 roughly in requested new spending, and we had about 550 or so.
That's right.
So we had to cut about $300,000. But that's our job, you know? So anyway, I will, I will get a document like this that shows, I'll give options, if I can give options, and I'll, I'll bring my giant bag of everybody's requests, which I haul around with me. Somebody once asked me what this was, as I was walking for the camera, this is the town budget, hi.
Also as a weapon?
It could be right now, yes.
Second base, there's a lot of things that could be.
It could be, yes. So anyway, I will, I will flag things where there's been a notable increase in particular, or new, new items, and, and provide as many choices as I can, if there need to be choices, and I think there will be, and then we'll decide what we want to do with the budget next week. I will then let people know the next day by email or phone or what have you, and then they'll have about a week to decide whether they want to come to us with large weeping eyes, and say, whatever did you do, my children are perishing, I have no milk, or whatever they may say, and then we'll make our final decisions the first Wednesday of April, and then we'll be done.
That sounds like a good plan. This document is, is like the running operating expenses, and then the warrants are like the one-time things.
Warrants are the one-time things, that's correct. This is, yeah, this is the town budget, this is one-time specific, and the lovely thing about the warrants is they are restrictive, so if you get something in a warrant article, then you can only spend it on that.
Yes, okay.
In your budget, there are rules about what can be shifted around in what period of time, with what kind of approval, but they have more flexibility with their budgets than they do, I think there are also going to be some, and I think this is a very good idea, I'm happy about this, the select board is planning on putting sunset dates in the language of a number of the warrant articles, say, if you don't spend this by this date, and they're talking about, I think, generally two to five years.
Yeah.
Then it reverts back to the original funding source for the town.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to ask, like, I'm looking at the police cruiser 47,000, so we buy it, and there's some kind of coupon, a special event that day, and we only spend 40, 45,000, not 47.
Oh, people love saving theirs up.
So where does that 2,000 go?
Well, it hangs around like a mummy in a tomb.
In the town, or in the police department, or where's it hanging?
The, the police department has the right to spend it within the terms of that article. However, one thing that we, we do every few years.
So they could get dice to hang from the.
They could.
Riviera.
They generally don't.
Get tricked out rims.
Fluorescent undercar lighting, you know, the things that go up and down.
You hear the police car coming.
Conceivably, they could. I think we would be cranky if they did.
Yeah.
But what we do, about every two or three years, we go through and, because we haven't had the sunset clauses, and in the past, we have gone to June and Dennis and said, bring out your dead.
Yeah, we closed out several.
And they've gone through the records, and we then go to town meeting with an omnibus article that says, the following articles with.
Unexpended.
Unexpended or with, yeah, the following articles that haven't been dealt with at all, or that have monies that weren't expended and are left over in them, we're going to close them out, and those are going to go back into free cash, or back into whatever the particular funding source was for them originally, if it wasn't free cash. So we don't do that yearly, but we do it about every two or three years.
Okay.
We did a big cleanup two, no, three years ago, a smaller one, I think the year after that. The select board got fussy about the second one, and so we ended up, they yanked, they yanked some things out of it that we would have closed out, but that were their, you know, they were precious. Or whatever they were. He's behind the camera now, so we're getting, so we're getting good, he's not nodding off.
But, I mean, the money is, I mean, the money's still with the town.
Yes.
So it's not.
But once in a while, you know, a particular department will show up and say, well, you know, we want to do blah, and, oh.
We know.
During the Lincoln administration, we were given an article for planning a similar thing, and yada, 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 and those are the ones we're trying to kill.
Yeah, okay.
And the other thing is that June has to track all of those.
Sure.
Separately.
Sure, sure.
Because there are articles approved at annual town meeting or at a special town meeting, and that gives her additional work, so.
So could we do an umbrella sunset on warrants, or does it have to be into the warrant?
I.
Each warrant?
Ideally, it will be in each warrant.
So to be expended, no later than?
Correct, yes. You know, would it be nice?
There might be specific things within each one that require, that allows, that requires spending over different periods of time, perhaps.
I am not sure that it's, I don't know if it's permissible under state law or not to, to, you know, shoot all the nearly dead at once. Maybe we could offer, you know, offer a fee for their heads. We could, we could put a price on each one.
But even going forward, I don't think we can, I don't think you can just say two years across the board, or can you?
No, it's going to be, you know, I don't know what procedures the select board's going to adopt from it, I know they were, for that, I know they were looking at what other towns do.
Okay.
My guess is they'll probably have a default, but if I were doing it, I would have a default, but then examine each one and see if the default is reasonable, and if the default isn't reasonable, then either make it shorter or longer, but if the default is reasonable, use that. So we'll see, but I know that they're planning on doing that. So perhaps next year, we will do another snipe hunt. Okay, do I hear?
Is there fun?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
I second it.
All those in favor of adjourn?
Aye.